The board would not come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Koltar, Alderman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Martin, Alderman Ornowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaquero, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Con, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Navarro, President Reed. Alderman Tyus, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Vaquero, Alderman Con, fifteen present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Pastor Donnie Moore. Pastor Donnie Moore is the younger brother of our very own Sam Moore. He is the pastor at Saint Samuel's Temple and the seventh of sixteen children. Brothers, he has fifteen brothers and sisters, including Sam, and he's number seven. So again, let's give a round of applause. Welcome Pastor Donnie Moore for today's prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. President Reed, if I may, I would like to read this letter. Thank you, greetings again to you in the matchless name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. In essence, is just thanking Mr. Reed, the civic leaders, the aldermen that were able to be a part of the love celebration service for my brother and alderman Samuel Moore. And I'm not sure when we'll have this again, but I'm going to make sure Mr. Dan Gunther gives a personal invitation. He looked like he enjoyed himself. Again, Mr. Reed, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Pastor.
If you do not mind, all eyes closed, heads bowed. Dear God and King over all creation, I come to you in the name of the Lord Jesus today, lifting up every civic leader, civil servant, every politician and government office holder in this city. Dear God, we praise be to you for so ordering things that there is some semblance of order in this city that insists on doing things contrary to peace and calm. Thank you for not only for not writing off this part of the creation and allowing this city to descend into total disorder and anarchy, but for relentlessly pursuing it with your great love. All glory and praise to be with you that wonders of wonders, daily works, your infallible will through fallible men and women. Dear God, again, we thank you. We trust and pray that every deliberation, every vote, every ballot would be that that you are pleased in. Bless this leadership, bless this civic endeavor. These are other blessings we do ask your life son's name. Thank God. Amen.
Let's give Pastor Moore a big round of applause and thank you for leading us to in prayer today. Introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the thirteenth.
Yes, President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my honored guests Jeff Hans and Kevin Hayes from the Saint Louis, Kansas City Carpenters Regional Council. Thank you.
All right, welcome. Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today, Mr. Leroy Grant. Thank you.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the fourteenth.
Good morning, esteemed colleagues and President Reed. I'd like to have Nathan Lett, Demetrius Alfred from Firefighters Local 73, Jeff Abusi, Clinton McBride from Labor's Local 110, and Lou Hamilton from the Centrex Group. Thank you very much.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guests this morning Leroy Grant and Chris Pickle with AT&amp;T, as well as Jessica Methard Miller, the executive director of Metro, and her team.
Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I guess I'll pick it up for the alderman from the twenty-third. I'd like to introduce as my special guest today Jerome Murray from the License Collector's Office, Mr. Percy Green.
Percy Green, PG3.
One of our esteemed firefighters in the city of Saint Louis, and also Sean Weller from Congressman Clay's office. And, Mr. President, if I could this time, take a point of personal privilege for an announcement?
Please proceed.
If y'all see, if everyone's seen my post yesterday, Alderman Vaquero from the twenty-third ward is actually under the knife right now. They're doing a triple bypass. So if you can keep the alderman in your prayers, I'd appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Any further, any further or not, any further announcements? Alderman from the tenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As we get here on October nineteenth, which is reevaluate your life day for you folks that need some time to do that. It's on this day in nineteen fifty-four that the one-hundredth episode of Lucy, I Love Lucy, was on TV, and in nineteen sixty-seven, Smokey Robinson recorded I Second That Emotion. And to piggyback on what the alderman, Mr. Ornowitz, our good friend, Mr. Vaquero, is going on an operation. Usually at this time, I tend to pick on Joseph because it's quite an easy target, but I let you know that there's no animosity towards Joe. We wish him all the best. I wish him a healthy recovery because then I'd have nothing to do at this moment. Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's give a round of applause for that. Joe, as all you, as all of you know, Joe relishes in the fact that he has perfect attendance. So I know he's just wishing that he could be here today or be anywhere other than in surgery today. So we wish him all the blessings and everything, but keep them in your prayers. Approval of the minutes. Madam Clerk?
Approval of the minutes for October fifth, two thousand eighteen.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes?
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for approval of the October fifth minutes.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the twelfth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in the alderman's mailboxes. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the civilian oversight board. The appointment of Mr. Dan, Daniel Blotcher, who resides in the fourteenth ward representing District Six and whose term will expire on December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. I respectfully request your approval to the appointment. Sincerely, Lyda Cruzen, Mayor.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on Mayor's appointment to the civilian oversight board?
Mr. President, members of the board, I ask that this be sent to the Public Safety Committee.
It's been, it's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth and the second by Alderman from the twelfth that we assign this, this appointment to the Public Safety Committee. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. With dispense with line item seven, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? We will dispense with line items eight through ten. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill one thirty-eight sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for forty-three twenty-eight Swan. Board Bill one thirty-nine sponsored by Alderman Ornowitz and ordinance relating to the employees of the office of recorder of these salary in case of voluntary demotion or position reallocation repealed in Section six B two and Section six C one of Ordinance seven zero three three six, effective August fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, pertaining to the same and enacted in lieu thereof new Section six B two and six C two pertaining to the same and containing a severability clause. Board Bill one forty sponsored by Alderman Spencer and ordinance amending Section one of Ordinance six two five seven one pertaining to exemptions from the graduate business license tax codified as Section eight zero seven zero two zero of the revised code of city of Saint Louis by adding a new subsection five to Section one of Ordinance number six two five seven one, creating an exemption from the graduate business license for the local farmers selling their agricultural products and products produced therefrom directly to consumers solely at Farmers Market and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one forty-one sponsored by Alderman Green and ordinance pertaining to commercial semi-trailer trucks known as semis or tractor trailers prohibiting such traffic along Utah Street from the west boundary of Grand to east boundary of Morgan Ford exempting from said prohibition emergency vehicles including privately owned tow trucks when providing emergency service to non-commercial vehicles, vehicles making deliveries to nearby addresses, and vehicles with a gross vehicle weight of less than twenty-six thousand pounds and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one forty-two sponsored by Alderman Vaquero and ordinance amended Section four of Ordinance four nine six two three approved November ninth nineteen fifty-nine codified as Section four one eight zero five zero of the city code of ordinance pertaining to the fireman's retirement system to allow the, to allow the retirement system with the approval of Board of Trustees to enter into cooperative agreement to transfer credible service between the retirement system and other retirement plan established by the state of Missouri or any political subdivision or instrumental of the state when a member who has been employed in a position covered by one plan is employed in a position covered by another in accordance with Section one zero five six nine one revised statutes of the state of Missouri and the policies and procedures established by the Board of Trustees. Board Bill one forty-three sponsored by Alderman Navarro and ordinance repealing Section C of Section two of Ordinance six three seven 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 approved on June fourth nineteen ninety-six as amended by Ordinance six five four, six four five four six approved on December eighteenth nineteen ninety-eight and, and by Ordinance six eight two zero zero approved June fourth, two thousand eight, and in lieu thereof, a new paragraph is enacted extending the period of time during which the central, the cathedral square special district, business district shall be permitted to collect the tax within the boundaries of the district therein established and contain an effectiveness and emergency clauses. Board Bill one forty-one sponsored by Alderman Koltar.
One forty-four.
I'm sorry, one forty-four. An ordinance amending Section four of Ordinance, Section two of Ordinance number five eight two six seven approved March nineteenth nineteen eighty-one and codified as Section two zero eight zero six zero of the revised code of ordinance of the city pertaining to candidate payments to the political party of one whose ticket he or she proposes to run as candidate and seeks nomination, one percent of the annual salary of the office for which he or she is a candidate to permit, a candidate to submit said payments to the Board of Election Commissioners at the time the candidate files his or her declaration of candidacy and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one four five sponsored by Alderman Koltar and ordinance revising Section two zero eight one two zero of the city revised code of ordinances pertaining to the Board of Election Commissioners pertaining, preparing a sample official ballot so as to provide for the placement of candidates on said ballots in the order in which they are to appear on the official ballot rather than alphabetically as is currently provided and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one forty-six sponsored by Alderman Koltar and ordinance repealing the first paragraph of Section two of Ordinance number six six one nine three approved March tenth, two thousand four codified as Section two zero eight three three zero of the city revised code of ordinances pertaining to the nominate, to the, to the nominating process for nonpartisan candidate and in lieu thereof, thereof inserting a new first paragraph in Section two, changing said process so the nonpartisan candidate may be nominated by a petition signed by registered voters rather than a certificate signed by registered electors and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one forty-seven sponsored by Alderman Koltar and ordinance revising Section one B one of Ordinance number five nine nine eight two approved July thirty-first, nineteen eighty-six codified as Section two zero eight four hundred B one of the city revised of ordinances pertaining to the last date of, on which a candidate may withdraw from a primary election from forty days prior to the date of the primary election to fifty days prior to the date of primary election and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one forty-eight sponsored by Alderman Navarro and ordinance repealing Section F of Section two of Ordinance six two six two two approved on May twenty-ninth, nineteen ninety-two as amended by Ordinance six three eight four zero approved on July nineteenth, nineteen ninety-six as amended by Ordinance six four nine three five approved on May seventeenth, two thousand as amended by, amended by an ordinance six eight two zero two approved December eighth, two thousand eight, and in lieu thereof of a new paragraph is enacted extending the period of time during which the Central West and North Special District, Business District shall be permitted to collect the tax within the boundaries of the district therein established and contain an effectiveness and emergency clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the, to the HUD's committee, Board Bill one thirty-eight, to the Public Employee Committee, Board Bill one thirty-nine, to the Streets Committee, Board Bill one forty-one, to the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill one forty-three and one forty-eight, to the Legislation Committee, Board Bill one forty-two, one forty-four, one forty-five, one forty-six, and one forty-seven. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of the Health and Human Services Committee, Board Bill one thirty-two sponsored by Alderman Ornowitz, Alderman Gunther, and President Reed, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of City Department of Health, Mayor of the City, and their authorized grantee official on behalf of the city of Saint Louis to enter into and execute a cooperative agreement award with the United Department, United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs to fund the Saint Louis Opioid and Homicide Prevention Command Center. The following board bills were reported out of Ways and Means. Board Bill one twenty-three, committee substitute sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, and ordinance authorizing the sale of certain property owned by the city and located in city blocks two zero zero seven and two zero zero eight and containing a severability clause. This ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and comptroller to execute upon receipt of and in consideration of the sum of six hundred fifty thousand dollars of quick claim D remiss, release, and forever quick claim unto twenty-two hundred Washington LLC, whose address is fourteen twenty-five South Eighteenth Street, Saint Louis, Missouri six three one zero four, certain owned, certain city-owned property located in city blocks two zero zero seven and two zero zero eight. Board Bill one thirty, as amended sponsored by Alderman Valmer, and ordinance approving the petition to establish the La Colona, the La Colona Community Improvement District, establishing the La Colona Community Improvement District. That is the extent of second reading.
With dispense with line item fourteen, Madam Clerk, at the request of Alderman from the twenty-second, please move Board Bill one twenty-four off of the perfection consent calendar to the end of the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Perfection consent.
Board Bill six as amended sponsored by Alderman.
No, I said perfection consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Board Bill, there is none. We have none.
There's none. Perfect. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill six as amended sponsored by Alderman Howard and ordinance repealing, and Murphy, and ordinance repealing Ordinance seven zero four seven five, and in lieu thereof enacting a new ordinance to be known as the city whistleblower law pertaining to reporting improper governmental action and providing protection from retaliatory action for, for reporting and cooperating with investigation and or prosecution of improper governmental action containing definitions, procedures, or reporting improper governmental action and retaliation and penalties and containing severability and emergency clause.
Alderman from the fourteenth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill number six as amended.
Mr. President, I would like to perfect Board Bill number six as amended floor substitute.
No, the floor substitute hasn't been entered yet.
Okay, as amended.
No. It's been moved by Alderman from the fourteenth. Entertained a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second. Alderman from the fourteenth, please proceed. If you have a floor substitute, you can introduce it now.
Okay. There is a floor substitute, and I would like the alderman from the twenty-eighth to bring that forward.
All right. Alderman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fellow colleagues of the board, there are a few changes. You should have Board Bill number six as amended floor sub on your desks. And I'm just going to walk through three small changes that we've made to this which strengthen, oh, I'm sorry.
At first, you have to make the motion so we can get the floor sub before.
I apologize. So I, I move to put the floor sub in front of the board.
All right. It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-eighth, seconded by Alderman from the twelfth, that we bring floor, floor substitute for Board Bill number six as amended. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Now, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the floor sub that you have in front of you regards three changes to the whistleblower statute, and these changes strengthen the whistleblower law in favor of employees without posing any sort of undue burden on the city or the Department of Personnel. So the first one is on page three, and it adds verbal abuse, intimidation, and creating a hostile work environment to the definition.
Excuse me, Alderman from the twenty-eighth.
Hold on, hold on a second.
I don't.
Madam Clerk, the only mic that should be on is the person that I've recognized. So you guys can't have multiple mics on. Please, you, you have the floor. You have the floor, so please proceed, and then I'll recognize you after she finishes. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. So on page three, the, the first change here we have is adding verbal abuse, intimidation, and creating a hostile work environment to the definition of retaliation. So these are the sorts of actions that if an employee believes that they have suffered, that that allows them to come forward with a complaint under the whistleblower law. The second one is on page five, and what we've done is changed in good faith to upon a good faith reasonable belief, and this language is similar, this language is consistent with other case law around employment discrimination and, and other state statutes. And the third one is on page six, thank you. Yes, sorry, page six, section seven. What we've done is extend the complaint period from sixty days to ninety days. And so this allows employees, gives them an additional thirty days in which to make a complaint. And the reason for this is that sometimes the retaliatory action that employees face could be incremental over time. So ninety days is at least one financial quarter. So if it's a sort of action that they've seen take place over a series, series of pay periods, it gives them that opportunity to recognize that, that retaliatory action and extends that time from sixty days to ninety days. So those are the, the three changes that are part of the floor sub. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Alderman from the fourteenth.
I want to apologize to the alderman from the twenty-eighth. I mistakenly thought she overlooked the change on page two, but it's been taken care of in the, in the, in the, as amended.
Okay.
Okay. I would like to move, if there's a move that we accept.
Now you need to move to perfect the floor.
Perfect the floor substitute. Board Bill six AA as amended floor substitute.
It's been moved by Alderman from the fourteenth, seconded by Alderman from the thirteenth, that we perfect the floor substitute for Board Bill number six. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Board Bill one twenty-four sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy and Alderman Murphy and ordinance repealing Section four subsection seven four six zero one zero through seven five six zero four zero of Ordinance number five one eight seven one approved April fourth, nineteen sixty-three and pertaining to the establishment of the Decent Literature Commission, its organization responsibilities, powers, and purposes.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill number one twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we perfect Board Bill one twenty-four.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-fourth, seconded by Alderman from the twelfth. Please proceed.
Board Bill one twenty-four just repeals the ordinance that passed nineteen sixty-three which established what is called the Decent Literature Commission. It was a volunteer board of seven people whose goal was to help the police prosecute bookstores for selling what would have been termed at the time as sexually explicit books. So this is, this is a law that is still on the books today. It's, it's an ordinance. I, we can find no evidence that there have been any appointees to the Decent Literature Commission since at least the nineteen eighties and possibly even before that. So in an effort to sort of clean the junk out of our basement, get rid of the old, we can make room for new laws that we're actually using. I think it's appropriate to, to repeal the ordinance that authorizes this outdated and, and not operating commission.
Yeah. Thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-fourth, seconded by Alderman from the twelfth, that we perfect Board Bill number one twenty-four. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
That is the extent of Board Bill for perfection.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill one eleven, Board Bill one seventeen, Board Bill one nineteen as amended.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize a motion for a third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Koltar, Alderman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Martin, Alderman Ornowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaquero, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Con, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Navarro, I'm sorry, Alderman, yeah, Alderman Navarro, Alderman, President Reed, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Green, Alderman Davis, Alderman Vaquero, Alderman Con, Alderman Williamson, twenty-four aye votes.
By a vote, staying motion, Alderman from the eighteenth, and third read, and finally passed the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of engrossments.
We have none.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bill one eleven, Board Bill one seventeen, Board Bill one nineteen as amended.
All other business being suspended. The President shall in open session fix this signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. Alderman from the 19th, you recognize on motion for the courtesy resolutions calendar.
Mr. President of the board, I'd like to make a motion for our courtesy resolution consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 19th, second by Alderman from the 27th and 13th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify or say an aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
First reading resolutions.
Board Bill, I'm sorry, Resolution 155 sponsored by Alderman Odenberg and President Reed. The Board of Alderman urged the mayor to direct us, to direct the city's chief techni- techni- technological, no, technological-
Technology officer.
Officers to develop a smart city strategy that would include a roadmap for achieving the outcomes of the strategy, establish partnerships with the government, entities, businesses, and in the community implement said strategy in an equitable manner that ensures access, equal access to technology and related services and benefits that may result therefrom, and to prepare and present a bi- a biannual report to the Board of Alderman that details the current status of smart city initiatives, which identifies current and potential opportunities that the city may enact, may act upon, and other matters which the chief, which the chief technology officer may deem relevant or important.
Alderman from the 16th, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution 155.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to make a motion for the assignment of Resolution 155 to the Streets Committee.
Been moved by Alderman from the 16th. Entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the 13th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify or say an aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution 155 to Streets.
So noted. That is the extent of first reading of resolution.
Second reading.
We have none.
Miscellaneous unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Tuesday, October 23rd, Streets Refuge, Streets Traffic and Refuge Meeting, 9:00 AM in the leisure room. Thursday, October 25th, Transportation and Commerce, 10:00 AM in the leisure room. And Friday, October 26th, the full board meeting, 10:00 AM in the chambers.
Is that the extent of your-
That's the extent.
Alderman from the 22nd.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest John Nations from Metro. And also, Metro will have a brief presentation for us about Reimagine. And so, we're asking all our colleagues if we could just hang around for a few more minutes, solicit this dynamic presentation, and how it impacts our transportation system in the city. Thank you.
Yeah. And welcome, John, and thanks for your service. John has done just a dynamic job over there at Metro. Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. The auto confusion still prevailed in the 4th ward. And I'm warning Vince Shamel, George Jones, Slatehold, Steve Hutchins, Rice, to check in with leadership before you, do not disrespect my leadership in that community. I am not dead. I feel like a goldfish in a piranha tank. Everybody is the predator, predators are preying. And I'm asking you personally to stay out of my ward and check in with leadership before you keep creating confusion in my community. And tomorrow, at 12 noon on St. Ferdinand and Sarah, we're dedicating Cutting the Ribbon for the 911 Senior Daycare Facility. So, the ward is coming together. We're building, but we still have these confusionists, might I say, keep coming into my community, confusing my constituents, having meetings, and you can't have 10 meetings a month. Stay out of my ward. Thank you.
I certainly hope they take that second one to heart. I know you've been working really hard over there and making some great progress. And certainly, it can be a hindrance when, when people who do not understand your ward come over and get involved in, in trying to change the course and direction. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Going once, going twice. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the Alderman from the 1st, 15th, and 23rd be excused for necessary absence.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, second by Alderman from the 10th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify or say an aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President? The Alderman from the-
Alderman from the 26th.
Hate to be rude and interrupt you. I'm sorry.
Once I put the vote, I cannot, yeah, it's too late.
To make announcements? Okay.
Yeah, once I put the vote, I can't go back. So, yeah. It's been moved, Alderman from the 18th.
Mr. President, I move that the board adjourns until Friday, October 26, 10:00 AM.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 18th, second by Alderman from the 10th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify or say an aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion. Stand adjourned.